Alright, if everybody is ready, we're gonna have our pledge of allegiance tonight. Commander Yerkerello and Lieutenant Commander Charles Miller.
Hijo, hola, crees y armas. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Order, arms out, face forward, march.
Appreciate that. With that, we will call a February 22nd, 2024 regular meeting of the Coffee County Board of Education in order. And Dr. Lee, can you give our indication?
Yes, sir. Who would listen, please, Bowery? Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all these young people who are here. Lord, we just ask for your blessings over them as they attend school and as they go through their daily lives. Keep all of our children and our young people in Coffee County safe and help them make good decisions, Lord. Just guide and direct our parents and everyone involved with raising children here in Coffee County and educating our children. Lord, guide and direct our teachers and our staff and our bus drivers and just put a hedge of protection around our schools and our school system and all of our families and children in Coffee County. Lord, just guide and direct the work of the Coffee County Board of Education tonight and just be with us as we do business here tonight. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Right, everybody's got an agenda in front of them? That's what needed back to the changes. You can motion to approve the agenda. I move we accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you.
Motion second, all in favor? All right, Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir. On our agenda tonight, our first item of business is a presentation under student academic success. We have our mission and our vision. Our mission of destination graduation for college career and life. And our vision of creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student. We have a presentation tonight from Ms. Sarah Warren, our principal at the Coffee County Education Center. And we are excited to have Sarah, Ms. Warren, here tonight to tell us about all the good things going on at the Coffee County Education Academy.
Good evening, everybody. I must admit that I am a bit nervous, but I'm just gonna keep my eyes on all the positive faces. So the more you smile, the more I hurry up to sit down. I'm here to talk briefly just about our school, the Coffee County Educational Academy, better known as the Alternative School. I want to let you know, the first thing that I walk into, I have to be me. And so one of the things that I often think about is just the fact that the scripture that I live my life by is Hebrews 11:1. Not to preach to you or anything, but I live by it every single day. And it says, "Faith is the substance of things hoped for and the evidence of things not seen." And so therefore, my students may have made a mistake, may have made a bad decision, but I'm believing in what I'm looking for and what I'm expecting. And so that's the one thing at our school that we constantly remind our children about. Our PowerPoint is very simple. I wanted to keep it very short because I want to be able to move along the way on today. So if you'll just follow along with me, we are located right on the block, as they affectionately call it, 1020 South Gaskin Avenue. We share the campus with the freshman campus. Operating hours is 7:50. We receive students at 7:50 and they're there until 2:30. Our mission statement is simple. The Coffee County Educational Academy is committed to proactively teach its students appropriate behaviors essential to valuing themselves, valuing others, and valuing learning. We stress that on a day-to-day basis. And we start that by the first thing that we do in the morning. And that's making sure that our children feel safe. Now, I must admit, my kids did the PowerPoint, so they wanted to put that picture up there. They felt like it was a nice picture. I said, "So go for it, put it on up there." That's my direct line. And I want to make sure that you all understand that after this presentation, we're just giving you a tidbit, but I want to invite you all to please stop by, visit us at any time, especially our board members. We have some exciting things going on at our school. Have you ever imagined working with a staff such as, that I have? My staff is Amanda Murphy and Officer Blake Peterson is our office staff. We have a philosophy at our school where everybody does everything. And so therefore, you will sometimes come in and see our secretary, our bookkeeper, she might be sweeping, she might be cleaning, anything to do to make the children feel safe and secure and actually feel comfortable in their school. So this is our office staff. I have a staff of teachers. We have about eight certified teachers and also two paraprofessionals. That's all included. These are Coffee County's finest. And I want to make sure that you all see the names. Ms. Cindy Brown, Megan Edg, Shonda Harris, Mr. Carlton Hodges, Ms. Bernice Martin, Ms. Tana Owens, Tanya Clemmons, and Kavlin Smith. I could not do anything that I do on a day-to-day basis without my staff. And they are the ones that help us by starting first thing in the morning. Everyone has a role when you first come in the door. We greet the kids with a smile. We always have a post. And everyone is making sure that they're feeling valued and that they're feeling safe. Our daily routine starts first thing in the morning. As soon as the kids come in, I brought this sample where we just warned the kids, every student, we want to make sure that they feel safe. What are the battles that not only just my school, but every school, because I want to make sure I stress this. Our children are not just at a school separate by themselves where they don't matter. They matter. They are a product from their home schools. So we're serving every one of the schools in Coffee County that might need our services. And so our children come to us from various schools, all the way from elementary school on up to the high school. And every child is wanted just to make sure that they do not come in with anything that they're not supposed to. One of the things that we're having to fight against as a county, not just at my school, but as a county, we have a situation with the vape situations. And our schools are working together to combat, you know, the issues of having vapes within the school system. And so therefore, we use this, this is just a sample. Well, we have two ways of entry because we started growing. I guess all good things has to grow. And so we started growing. So we had two different points of entry where we actually warned each and every children, each and every child, to make sure that nothing is on them. And once they receive the checking of being okay then, we have the paraprofessionals there to serve them breakfast and then they go to their classroom to immediately start capturing kids' hearts. We do, we are separating our kids with academic lessons through Edge Newity. It's an online program that is, you know, basically online, but at the same time, we have started this year doing some blended learning. Meaning that what we would do is that we would actually start our day off with some of the general, you know, just academic journaling, ELA skills, working with math skills, and then they separate into their individual lessons according to their grade level. We call it Mind Reset. Every class has a restroom break where they may, you know, they rotate. Now, we are very procedural in our school, whereas we actually move as a class. And so therefore, one class at a time has a restroom break. And that's one of the pictures of one of the teachers that's observing the kids playing football just to get them a chance to be able to have their minds just to, once you sit in front of the computer for a long period of time, you need a time just to relax your mind. So they have some time where they actually play football, may play board games, or just simply socialize in an appropriate manner. This is my highlight of our school's success, parent involvement. Just at our last recent parent-teacher conference, we had, at the time, we had 43 students that was located in our school building at our last parent-teacher conference. And we actually had 40 parents to come face-to-face for a parent-teacher conference on that day. So it's not just me, it's not just the teachers. We are a team. Our parents are there, they're present. They are an advocate for their children. They want to hear about their success. They come, they ask questions. I have an open-door policy. At any time, parents can come in to have a communication time with me. And they want to know about their children's success. Another part of their success is that they help us to make sure that their kids are dressed appropriately. We actually have them in uniform, where I had to actually change it a little bit just in the last three weeks because some of the kids teased when they told me, they said, "Ms. Warren, they say we look like little cigarettes." And I said, "Cigarettes? What are you talking about?" And they said, "The white top and the khaki bottom." I said, "Well, okay, we can fix that." I said, "How about we just upgrade it?" And we actually have black tops. They can wear one of the four colors, black, gray, burgundy, or white. Stick with the Trojans and we'll be successful. And we just amended that. But we had to listen to the kids and what they needed as well to feel successful themselves. Everybody wears a belt, everybody's shirt is tucked in. It's about procedure and order. Student achievements. These are just some activities that we've done. One of my babies that is in elementary school, that was his science project. He just presented, that was just a picture after he presented it to some of the older kids. And then the second picture is a picture of Douglas National Bank. We do work with the community. I want our kids to follow suit with our goal in this college career in life. And so therefore, I want them to have good credit. I want to make sure that they understand the importance of having good credit and also have starting a checking account and a savings account. So Douglas National Bank was just so gracious to come and speak to some of our kids. This was just a little bit of the number of the kids. The other kids were too shy to take a picture, but these were like, "We'll take it because we getting ready to have a checking account." So these are just a few achievements that we've had. I noticed that one of the pictures that, and I will conclude on this note, one of the pictures is not on that particular screen, but I wanted to highlight one of our students who is in the class of 2024. He decided that he wanted to make sure that he had everything in order. And he got with me, Mr. Jowers. He was like, "Ms. Warren, I gotta do this." And I believed in him. And I had to find him one day because he was about to, he was about to give up. And this job requires, at this particular vocation, you don't have set hours. You gotta do whatever you gotta do to find him. And so I had to go and find him. And it took me about two days. And the second day, he came to school after he was about to feel defeated. He said, "Ms. Warren, I heard you was looking for him." And I was like, "Yes, sir, I was." He came back to school and he did the work. He put the work in and he has now decided that he's said, "I'm gonna do this work." He is an early graduate. And he sent me a picture and I called him today. He worked with my husband as a mentor. And he said, "Ms. Warren, I'm gonna do this." And he finished all of his classes and he will be graduating in May 2024. It's not about me, it's not about the teachers. It's all about these kids. And he sent me a picture, Dr. Lee, of his first truck that he bought with his, he's been hired at Fleetwood. And he is working right now and he's waiting on graduation to walk across that state. So come visit us. And with this, I say thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Warren, for what you're doing. Heard so many good things happening at your school. Thank you.
Alright. Next item on the agenda, we have some recognitions and we have special recognition with athletics. And we have athletic director, Coach Steve White, who is here to lead us in these recognitions of our athletic teams.
First of all, it's good for the second month in a row to fill this room with champions. Consider this kind of the motto of this school year athletically so far. Championships, milestones, and memories. That's where we are. We're just through fall and winter sports. Our spring sports are off to really superb start. Our basketball team is already qualified, two votes for the state meet at the end of the year. Things are going well. Before I turn this over to our swim coach Barbara Joyner and our wrestling coach Kate Paul, success starts at the top. And it starts with this group right here. There's no possible way without your support that we could be standing here, sitting here today. Dr. Lee, you and your staff, I know some of y'all cringe when you see me coming, but your willingness to work with us and provide the resources we need is paying off. And I'm so proud of these student athletes and these coaches and the things that are taking place so far this year and looking forward to finishing on a high note. So I'm gonna turn it over first to Coach Barbara Joyner. She's gonna come up and recognize our champions in swimming and then Kate Paul will follow her with our wrestling.
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. This is my assistant, Jared Anderson, my right-hand person. Several of our swimmers are either involved in another sport or they're working. So I'm gonna introduce the ones that I do have. These are the region champs to start with, John Vickers. John was region champ in the 2 IM, the 100 butterfly, and the 200-yard freestyle. He would have qualified in more at the region meet, but he could only swim two individuals and two relays, so that cut him to those. Reed Waldron was 200 freestyle relay, he's working. Josh cribb was also the 200 freestyle relay, he's at soccer. Mathis McCullough, 100-yard free and the 200 freestyle relay, and he's at soccer. Carson Sculton was the 100-yard backstroke winner. And Annalee Osteen was the 50-yard freestyle and the 100-yard butterfly. After we did region, we completed at the state swim meet, which was just about two weeks ago. We had in our finals, John Vickers finished in freestyle in the top 10. In our girls, Maggie Mitue, Nora Lott, Carson's not here and neither's Annalee, then the 200-yard freestyle relay. And this is, we competed with both 1 to 5A all at one time and then they separated us into our categories at the end. But we're just not competing with our classification. It's our everything from 1 to 5A. And you got anything you'd like to add? This is our 30th year. And we're hoping and praying somebody will leave us some money to build a pool. So that's our goal. And these, Maggie is our captain this year and John is our co-captain. And John is a senior and so is Maggie. Let me thank you.
Get up there, coaches. Y'all gotta get in there. Say that, they, I gotta get in there. Thank y'all. Alright, our next recognition is Coach White with wrestling.
That was made for somebody 5'6". That's awesome. Great start. Y'all want the wrestlers to come up right now? Come on, guys, y'all come on up. Girls, girls and guys, y'all come on.
Get over here, Matty, you ain't big as a man anyway. Alright, we appreciate the opportunity to come tonight to celebrate these guys and these girls on accomplishments this season. We also appreciate Coach White, Dr. Lee, Lee Mobley, and the board for allowing us to be here tonight. Really, nobody understands wrestling, so y'all just lock in. So I'm about to give the whole breakdown real fast, about 20 minutes worth. But to start out, our girls program has grown and really taken off. Our middle school girls, we had a big turnout, like 20-something girls this season. So we hired two female coaches, Coach Matty and Coach Katie. They took that on and they floated back and forth from the high school to the middle school and did a great job. And then they ended up coming up with us after the girls' season was finished and helped us so they could learn and figure out this whole weird concept of a sport that we have, that so many components go into. So we really appreciate them. And we have four girl qualifiers for sectionals this year. So they wrestled at the region tournament, took six as a team. In the area tournament, so their area is different than ours. We have a region, which is five teams. And their area is like 31 or 32 teams, something like that. So they have to place top four to come out of that. And they did, all four of them placed top four. So we want to recognize them tonight as well. So that's the first time, and they're all coming back. They're all sophomores or juniors, so we look forward to next season. Onto the guys. You know, we, while we're thanking people, one of my old mentors told me one time that, you know, when I first started coaching, that one of the biggest things is responsibility. So if you can figure out how to break responsibility down and delegate it, delegate it out, and then take it one piece, one small piece at a time, it will make things a lot easier. And that's what we've done. And we were, me and Clay, Coach Davis, we started this thing nine years ago together. And it was just us two. And we did JV and we did varsity and it was, it was so much. And we were finally, this year, we were able to hire a full staff. And it made it so much easier and more enjoyable. And every, every coach on this staff, like I said, the female coaches, everybody had a job, no matter what tournament we went to. So if we went, if we sent half the kids to the cook tournament and the other half, we, me and Clay took to the Hookem Holiday Clash. It was a 32-team tournament. We took like seven or eight kids and we placed top six as a team. Everybody had a role. So whether it's a coaches' meeting, figuring out team points, or staying after to figure out, you know, how the next practice is gonna go, I just want to thank the staff and everything that they did pouring in to what we built. And, you know, one of the biggest assistant coaches you can have is obviously a wife. So I want to thank Ms. Amy too. She's back there somewhere. She's the go-to when I'm venting or something didn't quite work out. You know, what do we need to do different? You know, she's that, she's that one that's like, "Well, here, this is what has worked in the past for y'all. Why don't you just keep doing it?" So everything kind of worked together as far as this season. I think I told you all last year, we were young and everybody was coming back. We were only losing a handful of seniors. So it worked out that we're loaded with juniors. And we've got a really big sophomore group. So, and the freshman group coming in. We're only graduating four this time. Four good ones, you know, they're gonna be hard to replace. But that's a lot different than replacing 10 or 11 moving forward out of 14 weight classes. So next year, we look to, you know, keep our foot on the gas and keep going. But one of the hardest things to do with, as far as coaching goes, is kind of leaving your ego at the door. And that's what we tell these guys and girls, we got two girls in four block. I tell them all the time to leave their ego at the door when they come in. You gotta be humble and grateful, but you also have to give yourself that opportunity to work that day and understand that you need to improve. You're not, you're not there yet. And that's what we did as a team this year. Like I said, we split up and we set a group over here to this tournament, a group of stake placers maybe to this tournament. And we really weren't worried about team points. That was very hard. Clay kept telling me, "Put your phone down, quit looking at it." You know, "What are you doing?" And I was like, "Well, dang, they were in the seventh. We only brought eight, you know, out of 14." He's like, "Look at that." So those are the small wins that end up adding up to get the end result that we were chasing. So by leaving your ego at the door, you develop, you're not so much worried about winning, you're teaching them how to win, how to be hungry to win individually. And then it all comes together collectively at the end. And then we get that result that we're after. And that's what happened this year. We had nine qualified for the state, or yeah, nine, nine came out of region and qualified for sectionals. No, 13, sorry, 13 came out, there's a lot. 13 came out of region and qualified for sectionals. And nine qualified for the state tournament. Seven out of the nine placed. And that, that's more than we've had since we've, you know, been a part of this program. And then, you know, obviously, me and Clay talked on the way home on the bus ride back. That's always the, what do we need to do different? You know, stage, while they're all asleep because they're worn out, you know, obviously. Or they're acting like they're asleep. But we're always like, what do we need to do? How do we need to fix this? This is a problem, Mary, you know, whatever. And Clay said, "We gotta win that first round." We need as many people that qualify to win that first round. And this year, we swept the first round. Every, every one of them that qualified. And then we were able to hold on to that lead and sustain it for the remaining of the tournament and placed top four, which matches the 1993 team that placed top four with under Jarrett. So, you know, and again, three, three of those, three of those nine are seniors. So the rest are coming back, which is a great thing. But we've got, the region champs, if y'all step forward real quick? How many was there? Eight? This also matches the 2020 season when we got fifth that year at traditional. We had, we had eight region champs that year. So we matched that this time with eight. And we ended up winning, you know, region traditional. And then we won region duels as well. So, alright, y'all step back. And it's gonna be pretty much the same ones, the state placers, y'all step forward. Alright, pretty much the same ones. So a lot of people, it's hard to, it's hard to understand how hard this is. I mean, you can say, "Well, y'all," making your schedule is not like basketball or baseball or football where it's like, "Alright, y'all come to us and then we'll come to you." Wrestling is, you got an 18-team or 20-team tournament and it all has to work out at the same time. And going through our schedule, these guys have a certain number of matches that they're supposed to get. And it all differs between each one because they're all different, right? So Huber might need 25 matches to be prepared for the state tournament, whereas Brian Kayes might need 35, you know? So they all have So they all have that magical number that we shoot for. And each one of these guys stepped up and they, they did exactly what we asked them to do. Majority of these either made it to the semifinals at state, which is huge, or that quarterfinal round, they had a battle. Two of these are, one's a sophomore who lost by, in overtime, to get to the finals, Brayden Stevens. Where are you at? Is Brayden here? Step forward, Brayden. Sophomore placed fourth at state and goes into overtime in the semifinals. All right, Chico, step up. My man. Chico ended up coming up short, 20 to 16, in the semifinals to the state champ, the one who ended up winning and had him broke. I mean, I really believe, me and Clay talked about it, Wesbury and Chewie, you know, we talked about it, if there was 20 more seconds, he's in the finals. Not saying he would have won it, but he's in the finals, you know, as a junior. And that's, that's big time. So y'all give, give it up for Chico. And we had a slew of fifth-place placers, and Pooh Bear, returning region runner, I mean, a state runner-up, gets third. Step up, Pooh Bear. And then Arthur Reed Jr. coming back, gets third. Brian Kays Jr. gets fifth. Marcus Senior gets fifth. Aubrey Hernandez Senior gets fifth. And when you have seven placers and you don't have a champion, because those, those points, the point spread is, is different. So you get placing points, and then you get advancement points for each round. So that tells you how strong this group is, to have seven placers and no champion, and get fourth in the state. And 5A and Single A, hands down, were the two toughest classifications. 7A, obviously Camden's really good, but after that, Camden and Beaufort, and then it kind of falls off a little bit. So, but 5A and Single A, for these, for these guys to qualify, let alone place, is huge. But that's, that's our little goals that we met, and we're going to, we started back today, actually, getting back to the grind and preparing for next year. Like I said, these four seniors are going to move on, and we're going to check on them at age 25 and see how well they're doing because that's our big goal. And, you know, any time that you've got former wrestlers that come back and coach with you is huge. And this, Clay Davis, our assistant, Garrett Wesbury, our other assistant, and Coach Chewie, that wrestled for his three-time placer, by the way, in a coffee single, came back and coached with us. Then I'll put you on coaches, slash male coaches, Coach Matty and Coach Katie on the end down there. And, you know, we appreciate the opportunity tonight to let y'all in on this, this wild and crazy ride of wrestling. And we really appreciate it. If you can, man.
Are we in there?
Yep, yep. I've got everybody.
Y'all did great. Congratulations. Great job. One of my students I taught in eighth grade, and he was one of the majors, so I had to go speak. All right. At this time, we'll move forward with our next recognition, and this is our REACH Scholars and REACH Scholarship recipients. And we have Dr. Tanya Johnson, who is our Special Education Director, and she is part of our leadership team here at Central Office. And she heads up the REACH Scholarship Program for us. And then we also have Ms. Jill Pruitt, counselor from Coffey Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we will be recognizing our 2023-2024 REACH Scholars. And I know I've been doing this for a number of years, so REACH stands for Realizing Educational Achievement Can Happen. And our students are selected in eighth grade, and they have to go through a, well, process of being selected. We look at their academics, their behavior, and as well as their attendance in the selection process. And we also have some of our sponsors that help during that selection process. And like, this program has been started in Coffey County since 2014, but it was, it first began with Governor Nathan Dale, who initiated this program in the state of Georgia to help support Georgia's promising, some of the promising academic students to have academic, social, and financial support that's needed to graduate from high school, be able to access college, and achieve post-secondary success. And this program is partnered with sponsorships, like I said, within our community. And this year, we've had several sponsors to help sponsor the REACH Scholarship Program, which includes Williams Institutional Foods, Premier Peanuts, Satilla, RMC. And we're just thankful to have Ms. Pruitt tonight. She's their academic coach, as well as their school counselor. And we're going to let her introduce them on tonight.
Thank you for letting us come tonight. I want to introduce you to, we have four out of our five REACH Scholars that are here tonight. We're missing just one, but we'll start with Ariana Nicole Deluge. If you want to just step up a little bit, Ariana, so they know who you are. She is an eighth-grade student who reports that it makes her so proud when receiving good grades and honor roll. She's a volunteer with the Miracle League and an active member of her church, which is Faith 117. Ariana aspires to study criminal justice at Yale University to become a lawyer. It's reported that Ariana has a positive attitude, is strong-willed, independent, and a hard worker. Her parents are Mr. Larry and Renisha McLean. Her parents report that the REACH Scholarship will boost her confidence and satisfy her belief that hard work does pay off. So we can give a round of applause to Ariana. Her parents, if you guys, if her family, if anybody in Ariana's family, if you'd like to stand. All right, our second REACH Scholar is Rakaya Zanaja Gadsen. I'm going to stand up a little bit here. She's an eighth-grade student who takes pride in receiving honor roll and citizenship, character award. She states that she wants to attend college at the University of Alabama to become a cardiologist. Rakaya enjoys playing on the basketball team at Coffey Middle School. It's reported that Rakaya is smart, kind, and caring towards others. She works very hard to do her best at school and in sports. Her parents are her mom, Laquanta Godwin, and stepfather, Jakim Godwin. They report that the REACH Scholarship will support her dreams and help ensure that she receives a quality education. So let's give Rakaya a round of applause. All right, our next REACH Scholar is Yaslin Rodriguez. Yaslin, if you'll step up a little bit. Yaslin is an eighth-grade student who takes pride in making the Coffey Middle School cheer team for two years in a row, having perfect attendance, and receiving the honor roll and character award. She enjoys cross-country, cheerleading, tennis, and soccer. She would like to attend Valdosta State University and pursue a degree in education. Yaslin has been described as smart, sweet, hard-working, respectful, positive, dependable, and confident. Her mom is Rebecca Herrera, and her mom states that this will give her the support and encouragement to seek her dreams and become successful. So if Yaslin's family can stand, and let's give Yaslin a round of applause. And then our last one that we have here tonight is Jaslin Shanaya Smith. And Jaslin is an eighth-grade student who is proud of her accomplishments. She received a solo in chorus, student of the month, and perfect attendance. She admires her mother for her determination and strength in life. She aspires to attend Valdosta State University and study health care. She enjoys singing in the chorus. It's reported that Jaslin has great penmanship, displays, classroom etiquette, is a team player, and has great interpersonal skills. Her parents are Mr. Ernest and Antwana Smith. They report that the REACH Scholarship will provide Jaslin with the opportunity to attend college, further her education, and encourage new life experiences. So let's give Jaslin a round of applause. And our one student who is not here, I'm sure you'll see her name somewhere, but her name is Malia Lopez. And so these are our 23-24 REACH Scholars for Coffey County.
And what I want to say about the REACH Scholarship is that these students are identified in eighth grade, and we continue to monitor their, their academics, their grades, their attendance, their behavior throughout their middle school, high school careers. And at the end of their studies, if they're able to maintain that, they will receive a $10,000 scholarship to help pursue their post-secondary education. So we do wish all of you the best. Congratulations.
All right, let's get a picture. We have our consent agenda, our minutes from our previous meetings, monthly financial report, which was reviewed in our work session, our FY23 audit report, which was also reviewed in the work session, letters, professional learning program, Coffey High School media furniture, policy DIB, school calendar 24-25, and the GSBA delegate and alternate. That it's, you're accepting it for public review, so it says, the board consents for access immediately prior to this meeting, accepts to include the 24, I'm looking at the calendar, I'm sorry. Let's see, policy. It reads, the board consensus immediately prior to this meeting to accept the superintendent's recommendation to include the proposed policy revisions for public review in the consent agenda. So yes, sir.
All right, let me say that we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. I agree. Wade, second, rest in all in favor.
All right, thank you, sir. And we will, well, I will ask for an executive session to discuss personnel and the employment evaluation or disbar action of employees.
We have a motion to enter executive session. I mean, we enter executive session, rest in a second. Wade, all in favor?
All right, I would ask that we exit executive session.
We have a motion to exit executive session. Second. Motion for first, second, all in favor. Exit executive session.
All right, I've got the personnel list to present for approval, and I want to pull number 21, 22, 23, and 24, and we'll vote them separate. So I would ask the board to approve the full list without 21, 22, 23, and 24.
We get a motion to approve personnel list 1 through 20 and 25 through 39.
Sure, Lou.
Motion. Second.
Yes, sir.
Second. All in favor. Opposed? All right, can we get a motion to approve 21, 22, 23, and 24?
To approve it.
Motion to approve. Yes. Motion. Second. All in favor. Any opposed?
Yeah.
All right.
All right. All right, so that takes care of the personnel. At this time, we do have public comments, and I have Mr. Michael Newton is here, and to discuss lack of minority supervision, et cetera. All right, we have the policy that we follow for, for participation, and you've been here before, so you know the policy. And so I would just ask that you adhere to the policy.
I would ask that you repeat your policy because it's been a while since we, I don't sit outside of it.
All right, let me see. All right, let me see.
Five minutes and don't stay personal.
That's basically it, yes, sir.
I still like it.
While board meetings are public meetings and not meetings of the public, it has long been the policy of practice of this Board of Education to encourage citizens in our county to attend meetings of the board and to allow citizens to offer their suggestions, comments, and concerns about our schools toward the end of every monthly meeting. Of course, our citizens are invited to discuss their concerns with our board members at times other than just when the board is meeting. This is true of the superintendent, who welcomes your comments, input, and suggestions of ways to improve our schools. Persons desired to address the board during a regular meeting should submit a written request to the superintendent stating their name, address, and topic about which they wish to speak no less than 24 hours prior to the meeting, be recognized by the chair before attempting to address the board. Otherwise, follow the published guidelines for public participation contained in BCBI as provided in such board policy. Each individual shall be given five minutes to address the board. And if there are numerous requests to address the board on the same or similar subject, the chair may select representatives to speak on each side of the issue. If a group is present, they'll have a maximum of the 10 minutes will be allowed. The public participation section of a board meeting will last no longer than 20 minutes. If someone has an issue, problem, or concern that can be resolved administratively here, she should first seek contact superintendent or superintendent designated in an effort to secure a satisfactory solution prior to seeking to address the board. The board will not hear oral complaints or criticism regarding school personnel during public meetings. Also, the board may refuse to hear persons who have previously appeared before the board representing issues which have been addressed.
Thank you so much. Before everybody, I just gave you all a copy of a paper that a couple of community people got together, leaders. Now, what it is, is going back to what Sacks said back in 2010, that the schools of Coffey County Education hiring practices, there were very few minority teachers and administrations however to push the community leaders, such as Ronnie Johnson, prompted progress of change to the hiring practice. More minorities were hired in teaching and administrative position. However, over the course of a few years, we have, we're way off of the positive progression of change. In contrast, the past couple of years, Coffey County Board of Education seems to have moved back to the same hiring practices that were cited for by Sacks. Since strong community leaders such as Ronnie Johnson and Tony Wood have passed, you have digressed back to the old team. And let me give you a couple of examples. With student by the 54% minority, the following information raises alarm. Coffey County Report, the state of 2022 to 2023. And if you see, in 2023, we had 52 positions of administrative and 12 minority. This year, we have 52 and now to eight minority. And I'm hearing that we just lost another one that was in administrative position inside the schools. When we look at the schools and diversity, our bigger schools being Coffey Middle School and Coffey High, each only having one African-American or Latino or Asian-American supervisor. And we call it SLM. So we would like for the school board to get a steering committee to come forth, to meet with the community, to talk about these issues. Because if not, we're making sure we're reporting all this back to Sacks. When we talked with Sacks, they told us to keep records in it in because it is alarming that we're going backwards instead of forward. And so we don't know how we got to this place, but we need to fix it. Because at that time, things were higher, people were put in place. We had, the middle school had at that time, five, I think, to seven or eight, they had administrators. But then we had four, and even the high school had three or four. We had more African-American administrators across the board. And then we look at kids with IEPs. I know Ms. Warren was in here talking about the alternative school. And I came in before talking about the situation with kids with IEPs. Most of your kids at alternative schools, she said it's 44. A majority of those kids have IEPs. Majority of those kids, if they had some people of minority to understand how they act and who they were, it would help a lot of things along the way, too. Then the next issue we have is when it comes down to our cheerleading coach situation. I know we had some issues in the past with the coaches. We have, we have a police record where a coach got caught with another coach, and they're still here on the staff. But yeah, then we have a young lady that they're looking at replacing as a cheerleading coach due to the fact that she has a cheerleading academy. And that has, it doesn't coincide with why and what we're hearing. And so we don't know for a fact, because again, it's personnel. But we're asking that the school board, along with our representative, Ms. Leola Johnson, and all school board members, we sit down with the community and the African-American and Hispanic community and come up with a way, because ultimately, it's about all kids. But when we look at the numbers, it's alarming from 2010 to 2024. That is digressed tremendously. And so you all should see that that's the issue. Because we fought so hard to make sure that we got our accreditation back. And now we're back in that same place that caused us to lose accreditation. And I know a lot of times, I talked with Mr. Adam, Mr. Lott, the last time I was up here. He said, "Mike, I didn't know this." And so that's why we gave you all the paperwork. So y'all can see the numbers before you all, see what happened. And so a lot of times, we don't realize what's going on. But we know, Dr. Leece, this is your system because you are the school board superintendent. And so we're asking that you diligently look at what are you all doing and why that we have so many issues when we're getting rid of administrators that most of them minorities. Most of them, we pushed left and right, and then we got people that come from this, from those administrators having to go to Waycross, having to go to Old Silver just to get administrative jobs. They got the degrees, we can't say they ain't got the degrees. They got their specialist, they got their doctorate degree, they got degrees that are on top of degrees. But the people that's in front of them for these jobs don't have the same degrees. Some of them have lesser degrees. And they're getting opportunities, some of them have lesser years and getting opportunities. So we say we want our own to do better. That was one of the things out there when Davis said that, you know, destination graduation for kids to come back and move back to Coffey County and pull back into it. We're not having that, because those that came back, you're pushing them back outside the spectrum. And if that happens to some of your all kids and some of your all relatives, y'all won't like it, because you want them home, here working and building the legacy, I think.
Mr. Newton?
Yes, sir.
I said, "Thank you."
Well, you said, "Mr. Newton," so.
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Newton."
Okay.
All right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, we're adjourned.
I got something to say.
Where, Ms. Leola?
I want to agree with Mr. Newton tonight. I've talked with Dr. Leece about it. I started working in the school system in the 67, 68 school year before desegregation. And we didn't have any blacks, and I'm like him, we stepped back. We say that we are Trojans and we are, you know, moving ahead, we lying as a board. Every position that comes available, we put, we fill it with the white. Just look around, just let's check us. There's an elephant in the room. And before we can get things straight, we got to get the elephant out. And I don't believe in putting a black in place if they're not qualified. But just like you said, I think I counted five, six people. They've gone to Old Silver, Fitzgerald, Waycross, they're in Reese, and they get noticed. Why can't we do that here? We say, we don't want them to leave the classroom where they left the classroom anyway and went down. But we got to do better friends. And we're gonna be right back in the same place we were. That's down. And I don't want that for us. We've come too far. We've done too much, but we've fallen back. We're not following procedures, we following friends. And that's not gonna work. I'm not gonna go for it. I'm not gonna accept it.
I have a question. Mr. Hart at the high school, is he an administrator?
Yes, sir.
Why aren't you on this list? It's got a zero.
I don't know.
Cause he's listed as a co-teacher.
He's assistant athletic or assistant principal, he?
He's on, he's on there, yes, he's on the assistant principal. But one out of 50, Mr. Wade? One out of 25, or one out of how many there? What does that say? Our children don't have anybody to relate to. When they go to an office or in a situation, they need to have somebody that can understand them. They need to have somebody who's gonna come if my child has a problem. Now, I don't have a problem because they know me as a board member, but there are some people. And the principal, you heard Ms. Warren say, they look after the children that they get there. Yes, most of the children that's in alternative ed are because they have other problems and they have not been confronted, they have not worked on that problem that they have. They've done something, they just put them there. And then they have history in alternative student. But we got to do better, I want to work with you. I respect each of you and your role, but when you start going out, you saw the vote tonight. And I'd already talked to Dr. Leece what it was about.
Yes, ma'am.
And.
I do have a question. Eastside, I thought you said we had a minority as a dean in Eastside.
They just placed her there, Ms. Smith.
They just placed her.
They just placed her. But see, in the beginning, it was Adam's cousin over there.
How current is this?
It's current, it's your current.
I mean, today, last week.
February 27th.
It's today current.
And when did they place his day?
Sir?
They didn't tell anybody.
They didn't tell anybody. You're getting old, man. Can I say this? Do y'all mind saying something? I don't want to disrespect anybody else, but can I say something? What's happening is people are making moves behind closed doors. And then the community don't know what's going on in the middle of the school year. Come on, let's be realistic. It's a proper procedure for everything. I talked for centuries, we take for 15 years, I make up and more than robbery. It's a procedure when you move an educator. It's things that you can do.
Any move we've made has been board approved. It's not been, it's not been done behind closed doors.
Listen, listen, listen.
If we've made a transfer, this board is approved.
Everything's been approved. Yeah. It's wrong because it's not. It's not just tonight, that's good. It's meeting's adjourned, aren't you? Meeting's adjourned, it is.